Welcome to our 2017 Candidates Forum. This forum is coordinated and hosted by community volunteers. I have to look at the card for this. My name is Lori Searle, and I'm the events coordinator. The other volunteers here today are Karen Haddaway, Jet Haddaway, Deborah Griffin, Chris Marx, Tanya Cole, and Julia Reitburn. I'd like to thank the volunteers and the many citizens who contributed questions, and I'd like to especially thank the candidates for their participation. The purpose of the forum is to provide a fair, informative, respectful, and inclusion platform for candidates to present their views to the public. To help achieve that goal, we are fortunate to have Ms. Juliette Hall as our moderator. Ms. Hall is a former member of the South Fulton Chamber of Commerce and has previously served for four years on its Board of Directors. She recently moderated a mayoral candidate forum for the city of South Fulton and came highly recommended. Ms. Hall is a former twenty-year corporate executive of two Fortune 500 companies, including seventeen years with Chick-fil-A. A graduate of Spelman College and the University of Georgia, Ms. Hall is a sought-after keynote speaker as a thought leader on self-motivation and servant leadership. Ms. Hall has volunteered to moderate our event today, and we also thank her videographer, Scott Smith. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Juliette Hall.
Thank you, Lori. Once again, welcome to the City of Chattahoochee Hills Mayoral and Council Candidate Forum. At this time, I would like to describe the format and the ground rules. Each candidate running for mayor and city council was extended an invitation to this forum. This is not a debate. Once again, this is not a debate. This is a forum for candidates to communicate their vision, ideas, and solutions if elected for the office for which they are running. All candidates running for office, those who accepted the invitation to participate in this forum will be onstage, as they already are, simultaneously to each make a three-minute introductory statement in alphabetical order. After the introductory statement, all candidates will exit the stage except for the candidate or candidates I will ask questions to based on their office. Each candidate will have a one-minute timed response, or one minute to respond to my questions. If necessary, I will ask follow-up questions for clarity purposes, in which case you will have an additional thirty seconds to respond. I will ask questions covering the following topics: vision, personal leadership, collaboration, local government, citizenry, community development, public services, and economic development. There will be an opportunity for the audience to write questions to the candidates. We have volunteers to distribute these yellow cards. You should have received those when you checked in. If you need additional cards, please raise your hand, and there will be volunteers throughout the forum to provide you with these cards, and the volunteers will also collect them as well. And I do ask that you please write legibly and state your question clearly. All candidates will come back onstage to address the audience's Q and A. After the audience's Q and A, all candidates will make a three-minute closing statement in reverse alphabetical order, and I will cue you. Every candidate's response is timed. The timekeeper, who is Lori Searle, will let you know when you have thirty seconds left and ten seconds left to complete your response. When your time is up, I will respectfully move on to the next question. And finally, this forum is being recorded. Therefore, the audience is asked to be orderly and silent while candidates are speaking so that the video can record a clear sound. Are we ready? Okay. At this time, I would like to introduce all the candidates running for office. We have for the office, the mayor-at-large, we have the incumbent, Tom Reed. Marcia C. Lee was invited to this forum as well, but she declined the invitation to participate. For the office of city council, too, we have the incumbent, Richard Schmidt, whom I will call Richie after this point.
That's fine.
Okay? All right. For the office of city council, District Four, we have Alan Merrill, and we also have Rebecca Michaels. And now, at this time, we will hear a three-minute opening statement from each candidate. In your opening statement, please include how long you have lived in the city of Chattahoochee Hills. We will begin with City Council, District Four candidate, Alan Merrill.
Fay Godwin said, and I quote, Fay Godwin said, is that better?
Yes, speaking to the mic, please.
Just thump it. Just thump it. It's not on. Fay Godwin said, and I quote, "Alan Merrill is the most qualified person to take my place on city council. I urged him to run and was delighted when he finally said yes. As a community builder, I've been involved in the governing of our city throughout its ten-year history. I've been here ten years. I was involved in the planning and developing of every aspect of our comprehensive land use plans. I was the volunteer project leader who made the dream of Judy's home plate a reality. As chair of the Planning Commission, we recommended the zoning ordinances that the city council passed, and that finally made our rural vision the law of the land. As chair of the Chattahoochee Hill Country Conservancy, professionals taught me how to permanently preserve land. What does it take to be a good council member? You must be willing to work and put in the time, and I've proven that I'll do that by my work on the Planning Commission. The council devotes a lot of time to budgets and capital expenditures, and in my thirty-four years in managing GM, GE, and Kimberly-Clark, I have deep experience in all facets of finance. The council oversees the city manager's management of the city staff. I manage people throughout my career, and I have a pretty good idea how to retain skilled and productive people. Council passes ordinances and approves zoning and variances. I've been deeply involved in developing ordinances, and I know zoning. The city has three priorities on the horizon: conserve the natural beauty of Chattahoochee Hills, that will always be our number-one priority; maintain one hundred fifteen miles of roads. We've started to do some long-term maintenance, but we simply can't afford to do the job completely. We must expand our tax base and our revenues." Which brings me to our third priority, which is smart economic development. This is a strong suit for me because of my experience as a corporate executive in site selection. We need to partner with those developers and employers who share our values. Some will find us; we must find the others. I've earned the respect of the members of city council, and I'm confident we can have a smooth transition. The city staff is top-notch, and the city staff and council are working together as never before. We've got a good thing going; we can now move up to the next level. I don't want to change the council team; I want to join it. I need your vote.
Thank you. And how long have you lived in the city of Chattahoochee Hills?
Ten years.
Ten years, thank you. All right. We will now ask Ms. Rebecca Michaels for your three-minute opening statement.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank Lori and Juliette for hosting this forum to allow you, the voters, an opportunity to get to know us, the candidates, and what we stand for in this crucial upcoming election. I am running for city council because I love Chatt Hills, and I want to lend my skills and talents to the continued success. I was hired in the Delta Airlines Finance Organization out of grad school. While at Delta, I worked in finance and strategy roles where I had to balance conflicting priorities while ensuring we stayed within budget. After leaving Delta, I went into aviation consulting, where I worked with airlines around the world, bridging cultural differences to find innovative methods to help my clients overcome challenging situations and increase their profitability. In 2013, I moved to Chatt Hills to get away from the suburban sprawl of nearby Peachtree City, where I lived since being hired by Delta. While in Peachtree City, I worked with other community members to prevent the wrong kind of growth in the city. An example of this is a big box store that was built with acres of parking lot that paved over a scenic walking path through the woods. This made me keenly aware of the damage uncontrolled growth can cause to rural settings. I became more knowledgeable about Chatt Hills during the police chief Matt Rook situation in 2015. To better understand the situation and not rely on hearsay and rumor, I engaged numerous people on all sides of the issue to listen to their perspective. I also wanted to hear everyone's thoughts on how to resolve this matter and move Chatt Hills past the controversy. The time I spent listening to council members, city administrators, and the citizens of our community made me realize even more that Chatt Hills was now truly my home. I also realized there were room for new voices in our city, especially those seeking a "both and" solution instead of an "either or" solution. This made me want to lend my experience and passion to help ensure a great future for our city that has so much potential without getting caught up in divisiveness that prevents people from communicating. My vision for Chatt Hills is of a vibrant rural city with a community that respects one another. To achieve this, I have two important priorities. The first is purposeful economic growth while safeguarding the city's rural character. This is essential to Chatt Hills. As developmental pressure comes from all sides, economic growth provides financial stability, which drives the continued success of the city so we can say no to the wrong kind of development and yes to the kind of improvements that enhance our quality of life. My other priority is communication, which involves listening and not just speaking. When people know they are heard, barriers come down, and neighbors find common ground for "both and" solutions, even in the most difficult situations. I offer my ability to use innovative ideas to spur economic growth, my ability to get different people with different viewpoints to work together, and my vision for a vibrant rural city. This is why I am running for city council.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. And how long have you lived in Chatt Hills?
Four years now.
Four years, thank you. Our next opening statement will come from our mayoral incumbent, Tom Reed.
So first off, I want to thank everybody for coming out during a hurricane. I appreciate having such a great crowd here. Always like a great crowd in this room. And I have to apologize to you, I'm getting over cold, so if I'm making rude noises, that's not intentional. People ask and people want to talk about, "Why are you running for mayor?" And for me, it's an easy answer. I love this place. I love the people in this place, and protecting it has become really my life's work for a while now. The vision that this community has, the place that we put ourselves in to preserve this beautiful natural landscape from the sprawl that's destroyed every other rural area in the Atlanta region, has just inspired me, and it continues to inspire me. There's a lot of work to be done to make that happen. When I was elected, that vision was at risk. The city was on the verge of bankruptcy, and the fact is, it's the city that's protecting that vision. If the city doesn't exist, this vision goes away. That problem, though, was a perfect fit for me. You see, what I do for a living is startups. I'm used to starting up businesses with no money. And I like the clip from the Liam Neeson movie, Taken. You know, "There's some special skills," and I don't do an Irish accent well, but I have those special skills, and I put them to use here.
We've got some skills.
And I also don't like to brag much, but there is some bragging that's going to happen. The reality is, you know, we had to stop the bleeding. We stopped the bleeding very quickly when I took over. Actually, started working with staff before I even got sworn in, and we did that quickly. Focused on public safety, never took our side off of that. We were always safe in the community, but we did have to cut back in a lot of places to gut through the downturn. The good news is, I build teams for a living. That's how I've made my living. And we had some good material here to start with, and we have added to that material, and now the city is staffed with an amazing staff in every department and amazing people under them that are getting a lot of good work done. The council has also grown through this process, and that's also an amazing team working for this city. In our administration, we've turned a $500,000-a-year structural deficit into a $500,000-a-year structural surplus. We've burned off $1.2 million in debt and now have almost a million and a half in surplus that we're spending on improving services, things like the new motor grader and things like that that you've seen. Our operational focus is now on rebuilding the physical plant of the city, and you see that happening. Paving happening for the first time really seriously, the roads being repaved, gravel being redone, all of that. And while we've been increasing our tax base, we've also been able to reduce our millage rate. We found other sources of revenue that come from outside of the city that don't affect our citizens, like the T-Splas that I fought for. Also proud of things that we're working on that are coming up, like the new emergency medical transport vehicle. That'll help us a lot. Most importantly, we've been able to maintain our vision. Look around you. Ten years later, this city still feels rural, even though we've grown the tax base by thirty percent. It's a record that I'm proud of. It's a record we can all be proud of, and that's why I'm asking you to vote to reelect me as mayor.
Thank you.
I'll have a little more to say at my closing.
Thank you. And Mayor Reed, how long have you lived in the city?
About fifteen years now.
Thank you. Thank you. And our final opening statement will come from our incumbent, Richie Schmidt.
Well, guys, most of y'all know me. I'm kind of a last-minute sign-in, so I didn't write it all down. But either way, a few things about me. I've been here twenty-four, twenty-five years. My family's been here over eighty years. I got involved very simply because, really, this place is everything. We're a diamond in the rough. This is a very special place, is what this is. As far as, I made a few notes here. As far as, well, let me first off say, you know, there's nobody running against me, so it wasn't until last minute I signed in. But for six years, to piggyback on what Tom said a little bit, the hand we were dealt was a very ugly hand. You know, the opening act of the city manager back then, he got to come in, start his job, and fire sixteen people. That's what he got to do. And we got, and I was off. I thought we were $700,000, $800,000 in debt. We weren't. We were $1.3, somewhere, give or take. So as far as a governing body, you had one choice. Either you get it together or you hand over your charter. And what I like, you know, along the way, you know, you're meshing, what do you call it, personalities or whatever, but at the end of the day, the vision was there. The work had to be done. What I do in my life is I open and close companies. I am a closer. If you don't get the deal done, as long as you haven't gotten cussed out, kicked out of throat out, I come in there and try to salvage things. So I think that's one reason why, you know, myself, Tom, some of the other people that are on the council, I see Mr. Taylor back there, the businessman we worked with before. I think that's why this process, it was not easy, but it was something that had to be done. Or the vision that we hold to keep this place rural and to make sure that you don't have these buildings everywhere, just would not have happened. If you went back to Fulton County, you're a done deal. The truth is, moving forward, we will have some growth in this town, but we study every inch of it. We're not going to wake up, you know, and look like the backside of Noonan. Me personally, my biggest goal right now is I think we need to watch our borders because we have, like somebody touched on, we're that last piece of grass that's not developed. Okay? So if you want to come here, you know, you're going to have to meet some criteria if we're going to preserve our vision and our way of life. Our way of life is what's most important to me. I don't need everybody around me, you know, and the rest of you don't either. That's why you own your house and ten acres it sits on. Okay? Let me see here. Ideas and solutions. Let me get to something real quick about that. Your ideas and solutions did not matter until about two years ago. Why? Because we had to get out of debt. We couldn't do anything but sit on our wallet. So, you know, and for people out there that say that, you know, we had to guard the fort, and a lot of that has to be said for the city staff, too, who understood that. That wasn't a matter of choice. You either do it or we're done. And now, the ideas over the last couple of years and some of the conversations that we've had, I mean, we're just able to have those conversations, and you see what the benefits of those are now. You do have $3.2 million worth of money coming to fix your roads, and you've got a lot of other stuff fixing to take place. So, but those of you that know me know, if you want to ask me anything, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Richie. Thank you all for your introductory statements, and I will now ask all of the candidates to exit the stage except for City Council, District Two incumbent, Richie Schmidt. As a reminder to the audience, you will have an opportunity to ask questions. Please, if you need a card to write your questions, these are the cards, and we do have volunteers to distribute them, if you would like to raise your hand. We will also collect them as well as the candidates are taking their seats. Very good. So Richie, we're going to first cover the topic of vision, and I want to ask you, what does "keep it rural" mean to you?
It's real simple. We voted to become a city, to preserve our way of life, and to preserve our landscape. And if we do that, we do keep it rural. What that means to me is not having, you know, neighborhoods everywhere. You can't do that with our zoning anyway. There has to be stipulations. What we're trying to do, what others have done in other parts of the country and failed miserably at, is what they've done. So, and it doesn't really matter what city you're in, you have a set of rules. And regardless of who the developer is, or what developer's coming to you, or what's put on the table, we all have to follow the rules. If we get everybody to follow the rules, then this place will look the same way fifty years from now. So that's, that answered your question.
Yes. Just a follow-up question. What neighborhoods are you trying to keep out?
The ones that aren't here. We're okay with, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with Arizona, I guess that's not fair, but I mean, Hamlets, villages, things like that. Talking about the cookie cutter homes, you know, a hundred acres, a hundred houses, no trees, a bunch of pavement. That's not what we do here. We hunt fish, and we have barbecues, and we eat apple pie. Can't do that in a concrete building.
All right. And I live in Cobb County, by the way, so I'm learning a lot here about Chatt Hills.
Yeah, we're a little different down here.
Okay. Very good. Okay, next question, and this is about your personal leadership. What mistake have you learned from in the past that shaped your leadership?
You live and learn. There's been a few.
Well, we only want one.
Wow. I guess the biggest learning curve is you have to understand when you've always worked for yourself and ran your own companies, that, I guess, when you have conversations, I guess whether that's a pride thing or do-it-your-own-way thing, that one thing you learn through council is, you have to work with other people. You don't always get what you want. And the simple fact of just having other people there with their brains to add what needs to be added, a lot of times, you come up with something better. And I truly believe that's what we've done here.
Can you give us a specific example of the mistake?
Wow. There's some of the things in the zoning, probably. You know, it's just, you know, I don't know. I've always worked for myself, so it's kind of hard. I've always kind of ran my own things. I mean, unless you want something personal, and I'd rather not share that.
No. No. We were just hoping, hoping for a little, just for a little transparency as the city council representative for your district.
Well, give me more of what you want on that. I mean, I'd be glad to answer, just, I mean...
Has there ever been an...
I guess I'm affiliating that to government. I'm trying to, you know...
Yes.
I mean, that's about as deep as I can go, because I can honestly say, even working with some of the future staff or the previous staff that was on council, I see here, or the current staff here, I mean, that's what makes us a little bit different. We don't bring a pig-headed personality up here. If we've got a problem, we can hash it out, and I remember, some of you might have been at a council meeting a few months ago, and, you know, I made it real clear. What people don't see are the amount of hours I might spend on the phone with different council people before you show up and see a workshop. So a lot of this stuff is ironed out. We have the ability to do that in this town. So, you know, and I think that's in the best respect of the people. We have something here with only 2,800 people that everyone can be involved. In Cobb County, you can't. There's 8.2 million. You ain't got a room for them all. You know, so I think we keep that door open, and having the staff that we have and the council that we have, we're able to take off that corporate face and actually have a conversation. And I think that's what makes us different.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to collaboration. As city council representation, how have you worked with other council members and city staff to build a strong team?
That's a good question. We generally don't talk to city staff. That's the city manager's job. But I can say, when you talk to council, I'll just have to go back to, really, I hate to give you the same answer, but it's really kind of the open-door policy that we have amongst ourselves to where, you know, if I need to ring Mr. Reed's phone, he's calling me when he's in another country, you know, if I have a question or concern. Or, you know, Fay, I think I've talked to her when she's visited her family in Washington. You know, people know where to reach me, and I think, I mean, transparency amongst ourselves is everything. I think, you know, yeah, there was a little jockeying for position when it all started. We all know that. But we realize that we're all on the same team, and I think it goes back to six years ago. Either you do it, or you're not a city. And that's one reason why I've always enjoyed that group I've worked with, and because we can do that. It's a bigger purpose. See, you have to realize, when you sit in this seat, really what I think doesn't matter. I represent you. That's what makes making decisions so easy for me. I have a set of standards. And I told people when I first ran six years ago, "You can't buy and sell me. I'm not here to be bought and sold. I'm here to make sure my way of life doesn't change." And the truth is, I can trust myself to make sure that does not happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to local government. What plans do you have to work with the city manager to maintain a qualified city staff?
Well, we just got that. Last couple of years now. You know, Robbie, the current city manager, one thing I can tell, you know, citizens that are here, whether you're aware of it or not, you know, transparency and I guess what you call openness has been a question in the past. We know that, okay? I can say I feel very comfortable with the city manager. I have, he does take, my opinion, we had a conversation the other day, didn't we, for about twenty minutes, on a gateway sign, the difference and stuff, but I mean, either way, you know, even when it comes to police departments, things of this nature, you know, he does include us. That is something we did not have in the past, and, you know, we appreciate that. It's important that people understand, you know, what their role is, because if you don't know what your role is, then you don't know how to do your job, and then the big picture doesn't mesh. So, I mean, the city manager, he, whenever he needs me, he calls. I probably bug him more than he would like, but, I mean, yeah, I don't, the city, we're a city manager ran government. He's got the heavy hand, so you know. But as far as letting us know what he's doing, what he's thinking, we don't ever have to dig that out of him.
Okay, thank you. All right, and speaking of citizens, what is the most important issue you've heard from the citizenry, whether in the city or in the district, and how would you address that issue?
Bicycleists, throw them out. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Y'all taking me way too serious. Seriously, my biggest issue that I hear, because it's really, it's around the growth. It's around the growth. We have an excellent document in place, and, you know, we look at what comes forward. Our city planner, even though he turns some stuff down, we still put our eyes on it to see. You know, we'll try to make some stuff work. We do want some growth, okay? But what I hear is people want what they voted for. They want this place rural. They want, if you have growth, for it to be up there on the parkway, not back here, over here in the corner somewhere, you know? And that's why, you know, the folks I've talked to, I made it real clear, I think our biggest thing moving forward now is we need to really watch our borders, well, what's going on around us, and we have to make sure that that document people worked on for eight, ten years actually means something. If it does, we'll be rural. If it doesn't, this place will fall apart slowly.
And this is a good segue to the next question around... And this is a good segue to the next question around community development, since we're talking about borders. Suppose the city council faced a development proposal that meets all the regulations, yet a large number of citizens appeared before city council to stop it. How would you decide to vote?
I would vote with the citizens. Just like when we had the conversation about the village. My job is to represent you. Where I live, I'm not going to have a neighbor, okay? That's just the truth of the matter. Uh, we had an issue come up with the village. There may be a village up there one day. And that's fine. But the part that is in our city would be developed under Arzoni. The part that's on the other side of the parkway will be developed under, I guess, the great city of South Fulton now. Believe me, I've had people try to tug on my arm and those people know who they are and they know they're wasting their time. I represent the people. I'm not the guy that, uh, you know, you see every three years. I actually go to the stores. You'll see me. So, um, that's just who I am. And if you don't know that, you haven't been paying attention.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to public services. Why are drugs becoming an increasing problem in Chat Hills? And what would you do to support the police department's effort in combating this problem?
Well, I spearheaded the K-9 unit. Uh, my wife is a deputy. I raise K-9 police dogs, drug dogs, all that good stuff. Drugs are a problem here simply because they have not been gone after. Now they're being gone after. People do what they can do till they're told they can't do it. Same thing. Now we're getting them off the streets. Now that, uh, you know, Mr. Reed is budget and some of the decisions the council have made, truth is, we haven't had the opportunity until recently to do these things. You know, it's no big secret in this town, you know, you're operating on five, six, seven, um, police officers. That's a lot to rotate the shift on. We're up to about ten now. I think we've got a few part-timers, too, but that's something, you know, Stony's been working on. Our police department has not had any turnover in one year. Uh, this is a great place to work, around great people. And, uh, you know, drugs, you know what? I got two kids that drive. I don't want them around. The amount is what's mind-boggling to me. But it's no big deal. I mean, we know they're there. It's just time to go get them and that's what we're doing.
Thank you. And one final question for you, Richie, and this is around economic development. Access to quality public education is a factor in stimulating economic development. Chat Hills needs more quality schools. While building schools is outside the scope of your role, how can you influence the Fulton County Board of Education to achieve that outcome?
It's tough on me. I homeschool my kids. But I do understand that is part of, uh, you know, you've got to have a good school system if you're going to have some growth. How can I influence them? Truth is, I probably wouldn't sit in that conversation. I just wouldn't.
And would you like to explain why?
I just truly think that we're having a tough time educating people these days. I think teachers are babysitters instead of teachers. And until we get back to parenting and we get back to giving the people that run the schools, uh, the teachers mainly, a little leverage to discipline, we traded in the paddle for metal detector, uh, I think you've kind of put them in harm's way. And, um, I just think it's law and order. You know, I just, I, that's just how I feel personally. You want the truth, there it is. So, um, that's just how I see it. If a school comes down here, I'm sure we'll give them the zoning they need, the curb cut that they need and their boundaries. And, uh, I'd feel safer with my police staff now. But, uh, hey, until Georgia becomes, you know, a little higher than forty-eighth, forty-ninth, you're not educating anybody. And you're not giving the teachers the equipment to do it. So that was my choice.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Richard Schmidt, Richie. Uh, he is the incumbent for District Two. And at this time, Richie, you may go ahead and exit the stage and sit down. And we will ask now for the two candidates running for City Council District Four, Rebecca Michaels and Alan Merrill, to take the stage. As a reminder, we will have an opportunity for audience Q and A. If you need a yellow card to write your question, please raise your hand. If you have already written your questions down and you'd like to submit them to the volunteers, please raise your hand as well and we will collect those. Okay, thank you so much. So we have two candidates running for City Council District Four, Alan Merrill and Rebecca Michaels. And we will ask questions covering the same topics as we asked the District Two incumbent. We are going to start with vision and I'm going to ask the same question of each of you that I asked the District Two incumbent. And starting with this first question, um, what does "keep it rural" mean to you? I'm asking that question, I apologize. So we're going to start with Rebecca Michaels.
Keeping it rural means that we have to look at the economic growth that we're trying to achieve in our city. And how do we get to a point, is it possible, the goal being to have zero footprint for infrastructure while maximizing the revenue coming into the city? If we look at that goal, keeping it rural means every decision that the city council makes has to ask the question, does this move Chat Hills towards or away from a rural, the rural nature that the city holds? And one of the key things is absolutely, to keep this rural, we need economic growth. Because if we do not have economic growth, keeping it rural means someday, the developmental pressures that are on all sides of our city are going to keep infringing upon us and that rural character will be gone.
Okay. All right, thank you. And Alan Merrill, one minute for you.
I've come to the conclusion that there's really two different aspects to rural. One is what do we see? And we see farms and we see forests and we see streams and we see all of the things that we would describe as rural scenery. But I think the other side is how do people feel about where they live? And in a rural setting, people live where they have land and where they have freedom to make the decisions of what they're going to do on that land. And so I think it's incumbent on the city council to take that into consideration and not overwhelm the citizenry with too many rules, but to operate with more of a soft hand and, uh, recognize that non-intrusive governance is important to the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and I'm going to ask some different questions on the other topics now. And I'm going to cover the topic of personal leadership. Alan, I'm going to start with you. What are your three greatest strengths and weaknesses?
You should ask my wife about the weaknesses. My three greatest strengths. Number one, I'm a listener. I listen well. I'm also observant. And listening well is part of how I had the great partnership with Rocky Reeves when he was with us. Secondly, I'm an analytical thinker. I'm logical, I'm good with numbers, and, uh, I can see how things can fit together or don't fit together, what's incongruent. And the third thing is that I'm an honest man and I will tell you the truth as I know it. And I like what Abe Lincoln said, "How do you remember what you told people?" Because I always tell them the truth.
Okay, thank you. Those were great strengths, but what about weaknesses?
Uh, weaknesses.
Unfortunately, I can't ask questions of your wife. This is about you.
Well, I see. Be honest. Yeah, I'm a very trusting person and I tend to take people as, as they come and say, "Okay, you are trustworthy until you approve otherwise." And sometimes I make mistakes doing that. And I can remember an instance when I was being recruited to go to GE that, uh, I didn't do as good a job of assessing the personality recruiting me. And, uh, I learned to take my time and say, "Don't be so anxious to take the job. Make sure you like the people and you can get along with them first."
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Rebecca Michaels, what are your three greatest strengths and what are your weaknesses?
My three greatest strengths are compassion, integrity, and consensus building. And I think these are three things that a leader needs to have. I've spent a lot of time failing at those over the years, which enabled me to learn how to do these things properly. Bad points, I'm from the Northeast. I'm from Philadelphia. I grew up there. I talk fast. It's one thing to, coming down here and it's just like, slow down, because we're constantly, it's always, "Let's get things moving, let's get things moving." So it's slowing everything down a bit and realizing that things don't move as fast in my life at this point. The other thing that I think I've had some trouble with over the years is being too trusting with people. I give, I give people three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten opportunities to prove me wrong once again, and I've been counseled in that by some of my very close friends. And I think one of the other things that I, if you want to call it a failure, is sometimes with my talking fast, is assuming that others can understand what I articulated. Well, you understood that, right? Well, no, slow down and say it properly and say it slowly and explain things thoroughly.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, let's move on to the topic of collaboration. If elected, describe how you would work with other council members and city staff to build a strong team. Rebecca, let's start with you.
Well, for consensus building and building a strong city staff, I can just look to the Met Rook situation a few years ago. When I heard all of the different voices out there, all the rumors, all the hearsay, I decided to take it into my own hands to sit down with each and every person involved in this and find out what was really going on. And sitting down and listening to everybody and finding out the truth behind what's going on in public and talking to people and letting them understand that we can do things together and that there is an element of consensus because we have more things that we have in common than we have in disagreement with. And that builds teams. Because when you know that you can trust other people that you're working with and that you know that you can, that they will be listening to you and that you will be heard, that trust that's built can move people to the future and build teams much better.
Thank you. Thank you. Alan, same question to you.
I think one of, there's lots of different aspects to consensus building. But one is seeking people out and listening to what they have to say. Because you just never know who's got a better idea or who's got a different perspective that enhances the thing you already had in mind. I can think of an experience that Ken Langley and I had as we were building Judy's home plate and building that door over the serving area. And, uh, I came with one thing in mind and Ken would say, "Well, you know, just a minute. What if we did that a different way?" And between us, we worked back and forth and I think ended up with a wonderfully, a very handsome serving area on that. And it's just a matter of listening and respecting the other person. In terms of the city staff, one of the things I would request of Robbie is, if I get elected, is that I have an opportunity to attend a department meeting in each of the city departments just so I get a better idea of what goes on inside the city. Robbie runs the city, but the council needs to know what, you know, how things operate, how things work.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the topic of local government, I have a question just regarding your experience. What is your specific background in local, state, and/or federal government? And what positions have you held? Let's start with you, Alan.
This is probably the first time I've run for elective audience since I was in about junior high school. And, uh, so I don't have government experience, uh, outside of, uh, outside of what I've been doing in Chattahoochee Hills for the last ten years. And, uh, I've been in situations where I have worked closely with the city, but I haven't actually had an elected position. And I've, uh, I think that's part of what has helped qualify me. Being on the planning commission, for example, is a great training ground to learn what you need to know to be a good council member. And, uh, that's one of the things you'll find in the city of Alpharetta, for example, that most of the council members have been former members of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca, what is your specific background in local, state, and/or federal government? And what positions have you held?
This is the first time I've ever run for an elected office also. But I don't think that in any way, shape, or form requires you to have prior experience in local government. I have extensive experience with working in consulting where I've had to act as a diplomat, as a leader, as a counselor, as the boss, as the bad person, as the good person. And I think it's bringing the qualities that are important, the leadership, into the function of government to try to make it less onerous and much more personable, especially when we're looking at the rural nature of this and the fact that we have twenty-eight hundred people in our city. Twenty-eight hundred people. Everyone knows everyone. And if you're somebody that comes in with a heavy hand and with a bureaucratic mindset, that'll never work here.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I have a question around citizenry. What is the most important issue you've heard from your citizens in your district or in the city? And how would you address it? Rebecca.
The most important issue I've heard is economic growth. Where's the money coming from? How are we going to protect our city while bringing money into the city so that we can continue to function and that we can continue to grow? This is something that has been on the minds of everyone that I've talked to as I've been campaigning and I've spoken to many, many, many people about this. This is something, again, how do we maintain the rural character of Chat Hills while growing the economic base? This is the absolute most imperative thing that I think we need to do as a city right now. Because just keeping where we are ten years in and keeping the status quo is not something that's going to be viable in the long term. Because eventually, status quo leads to decay and leads to stagnation. And then that's when things start getting bad and desperation sets in.
Okay, and I'm going to give you thirty more seconds to answer this question. What's your plan for economic growth?
My plan for economic growth is to look at what economic factors fit the character of Chat Hills. And I think there's four areas that we need to focus on. Recreational, educational, entertainment, and agriculture. And I think those four areas are something that this city is primed to start addressing and primed to grow in those areas. Things that will have a small footprint but maximize the economic benefits.
Okay, thank you. Alan, same question to you. What is the most important issue you've heard from your citizens in your district or in the city? And how will you address it?
I think the most important issue that I'm aware of is not so much one that people come and tell me, "This is an issue and it needs to be solved." But it's something that I see going on. And that is a certain tension between the people that live in Serenby and the people that live outside of Serenby. I happen to have a District Four, which is half in Serenby, half outside of Serenby. And I would like to see more done for both groups to get to know each other better. Because there's great people in Serenby. There's great people outside of Serenby. And we need to create opportunities for us to get well-acquainted better than we have. It's a matter of encouraging us to each go into the strange territory of the other.
Okay, and thirty more seconds to you for my follow-up question. What is your plan to bring those groups together? What do those opportunities look like?
You know, so far, I've done that mostly by modeling it. I've been willing to, I spend a lot of time at City Hall. I spend a lot of time, um, outside of Serenby and try to be a model of what can go on. And there are others who are also models. Uh, the volunteers with Brickworks, uh, get out, get outside of Serenby and, uh, and do things that are, I think, that are good for the rest of Chattahoochee Hills. And we need to get more people in Chattahoochee Hills to dare to come into Serenby and find out, we put our pants on one leg at a time.
Okay. All right, next question around community development. What amount of latitude should a private citizen have to use a certain color on their house? Their choice of material for a fence? Their choice of material for a fence, fronting the road that their home is located? Or place signage on their homestead? For example, the recent schoolhouse sign issued on Hutchison Ferry Road. Alan, you take that question first.
At this point, we don't have design standards as a part of our city law. And maybe someday we'll get to the point where we do. We do have certain standards though that have to do with signs, the size of signs on houses, which is how we address the schoolhouse issue. We have standards about fences and walls that you can build in your front yard or in the front of your house. And we've made decisions as a planning commission and as a city council as to what materials are acceptable and what sizes are acceptable. We've tried to do it, again, with a light hand that allows for a lot of variation. But it says, there's a point at which you're doing something that really isn't rural and isn't accepted by most of your neighbors.
Okay, Rebecca, same question. How much latitude should a private citizen have to use a certain color on their house? Their choice of materials for a fence, fronting the road that their home is located on in the signage?
This is the United States of America and people should be free to do what they need to do and what they want to do. However, within the bounds of good taste and within the bounds of agreeable community. And I think when issues like this come up, this is something that government cannot legislate every single issue and every single situation that can come up with this. This is something, you can make general guidelines, but it's not something that a specific color or a specific sign or something like that may or may not fit within the bounds of proverbial good taste, what the, what the community is looking for, things like that. It's a very tough question and it can be a very divisive question. And I think that this is something where, being, especially in Chad Hills, being such a small community and knowing each other, this is where we need to come together and figure out, how can we find that consensus which doesn't give everybody everything they want, but it gives something that everyone can be happy with?
All right, public services. When considering the essential services of police, fire, and rescue and public works, which services need improvement and why? Rebecca?
Right now, I believe Chattahoochee Hills, the fire, the police, the emergency services are at a good level at this point for a steady state. But that does not mean that it's time to stop. This is, again, let's get back to economic growth. Stony can use more police cars, Stony can use more officers. Greg can use, Fire Chief Greg can use more his, his medical-capable emergency response unit. All of this requires economic growth. And while we are at a good point right now, there's still response times for the ambulance. There's still response times when you have 54 square miles to cover and you might have one officer working in a 12-hour shift. These are things that while we can do them on a day-to-day basis and we've gotten to a point where it works and it's functional, it doesn't mean we need to stop. This means we need to start looking for more ways of improving the police, the fire, and emergency services here in Chad Hills.
If you're elected, Rebecca, which service will you focus on first?
Probably Greg's medical, emergency, medical transport, emergency response unit since that seems to be the thing that's brought up most in the city council meetings. That and whatever Stony needs for drug enforcement right now.
Okay, thank you. Alan, same question to you. When considering the essential services of police, fire, and rescue and public works, which services need improvement and why?
I think that the people that are leading each of those three departments are doing an outstanding job and I can't imagine that we could ask for better than what we have. And let's understand the process by which we allocate resources to each of those three departments. And it happens in the budget-building process. It's a conversation that starts early in the calendar year, our fiscal year starts in the middle of the year. And the budget-building process is an opportunity for each department to say, okay, here's what I need, here's what I'd really like to have. And a lot of meetings take place between those departments and Robbie and those departments and Robbie and members of the council, typically two at a time. And so there's a lot of input we hear from, from all three departments. And I'd say as a council, it's done a wonderful job of trying to balance the allocation of assets and make all three departments as strong as we can afford them to be and always hopeful that, yes, we can strive to do even more and do it better.
Is there any one of those services that you would focus on first?
Yeah, the one I, I agree with Rebecca, but in a different way. The one I'd like to get to know best is, is the fire department. We call it a fire department and yet, most of their calls aren't about fires. They're about emergency services for people. And I'd like to get to know more about that, how that works, what are the legal constraints, what are the realities? And, and also be a, be a champion along with Greg in terms of getting improved response time out of AMR or finding an alternative.
Thank you. All right, and a final question to the candidates, and this is around economic development. What kind of job opportunities are needed in the city of Chattahoochee Hills? And how do you promote such business opportunities while maintaining the vision of keeping it rural? Alan?
I think there's two different, I think there's two different parts of that. One is looking at the, the economy as it exists now. And the greatest growth industry in the state of Georgia is the film industry. And in the film industry, there are lots of opportunities for young people without a lot of training to get their foot in the door and get started with good-paying jobs. And I was talking to somebody who's got a lot of experience in building sound stages and he said the most important thing for people to do is to learn to say yes. If somebody asks you to do something, yes, I can do it, and then go ahead and do it and you'll get ahead. I think the other thing would have to do with the, the kind of companies that would be like-minded that would also, that would appreciate our rural and natural character and the kind of jobs that they would bring to Chattahoochee Hills. And I think in a lot of cases, they would bring people along with those, with some of those job opportunities that would already have them filled, and then there would be other new openings for them.
If you can think of companies that may share the values of Chad Hills that you would want to promote to say, hey, come and bring your business to Chad Hills, what companies would those be?
It wouldn't be a company so much, it was, it was, I think it would be a function. I'm interested in looking at companies that have research and development functions, particularly if they are divisionalized, and who believe, as we're learning to believe, that we have a, we have a natural, natureful community. We've got a lot of nature here in various forms. And we know that nature, that if people work in a natural environment, they are going to be more productive. And companies who are intelligent enough to recognize that are the kind of companies that will share the values that we have, the appreciation of nature and our rural character.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca, same question to you. What kind of job opportunities are needed in Chad Hills? How do you promote those businesses to come here while keeping the vision of keeping the city rural?
I think it's exactly what I said earlier. The thing is, we need to look for industries that fit the nature of Chattahoochee Hills. And again, as I said, just four examples, agricultural, entertainment, educational, recreational. These things fit the nature of the city. And I think it's imperative, city council, every city council member, everyone in City Hall, every decision that's being made, we need to be asking the question, does this decision move Chattahoochee Hills towards or away from the rural character of the city? This is a thing that is going to be imperative because we can't sit right now and say, specific company A can come here, this is the type of job that can come here. Things that are going to come here can bring any kind of work, any kind of revenue, any kind of business to the city that's going to enhance our city, improve our financial condition, and put us on the map for others to know where we are.
Okay, and follow-up question, how do you promote the city?
How do we promote the city? I think it's key to enable companies and people who make the decisions where to locate corporations, where to locate film, film sets, things like that, that Chattahoochee Hills is a friendly city, is not somebody that is going to require a lot of paperwork and a lot of infrastructure, or not infrastructure, red tape to get the job done. It's easy, we're easy to work with, and we want to work with everybody that comes here. I think that's the key part of getting the city moving.
All right, thank you so much to our District Four candidates, Alan and Rebecca. Thank you so much. At this time, you may exit the stage and we will set up now for our mayoral incumbent. I must make this commercial break reminder. If you have questions, there will be an opportunity to ask them. We have comment cards or question cards. We have volunteers who will collect the cards from you, please write legibly. And they will sort those questions and send them to me. Also, this is a great opportunity to turn off your cell phones as well. Remember, this is being recorded, so we want to, and this will be provided on social media as well. So we would ask that you turn off the cell phones. I'm going to just wait a few more seconds for people to sit down before I begin. If you need to get something to drink, this is also the time to do that.
And think about how short one minute is. Just, just saying. Just have it in your head.
Okay, we're almost there, almost there. Excellent, we will resume. All right, so we have our mayoral incumbent, Mayor Tom Reed. We're going to ask some questions of you, I'm going to ask those questions rather, over the same eight categories. Some of the questions will be the same, some of them will be different. We're going to start with vision and I'm going to ask the same question of you that I asked the other candidates. What does keep it rural mean to you?
Keep it rural means keeping as much of the city as we can the way that it is now. And I don't just mean the physical appearance, because that's important, but I mean the quality of life and the way of life of the people that are living here. No place else in the Atlanta metro has done that. Every other city has been basically paved over, sprawled over, and all of the people that lived in those communities were forced out over the course of time. Our zoning allows for a different outcome. The 70% of this community that's going to be protected will be able to stay the way that it is and the people living there will be able to enjoy the same life that they enjoy now. The 30% will pay for that. And the, the economic development that comes in, in that space, the buffered, hidden economic development will pay to allow the rest of the city to maintain the quality of life that they have now. And benefits on both sides of that. Because the people that come in get to benefit from the beautiful quality of life that's outside as well. So it's good for everybody. The people that live here maybe end up with a grocery store a little closer, which isn't a bad thing either. So it's, it's both sides of that that are important. And I think our zoning speaks to both sides of that and we're working on creating both sides of that.
Thank you, thank you. Next question around your personal leadership, Mayor Reed. What have been your biggest accomplishments as mayor? Where have you struggled as mayor?
You know, the, the reality is, this city was on the verge of failure and we have saved it. And, and that is the biggest single thing that we've done. This vision, this beautiful vision of this community that 100 years from now will look and feel much like it does now, so different from the rest of Atlanta, only exists because the city exists. The hardest thing has been being a politician. People that know me know that I am not a politician. And it's, it's tough sometimes, the, you know, I'm a, I'm a business owner. It's, it's, you're used to working in an environment where you just make the decision and move forward. And it's harder sometimes in this environment. You have to slow down a little bit, gear back and have more conversation and all. And you get to the right place, but it is difficult sometimes. And, you know, you, you learn and you adjust your gearing so that it works. And over the course of the years that I've been doing this, I've gotten much better at it and we have a much better team for it. And again, the results speak for themselves.
Any areas in your leadership, the leadership style, where you've struggled? Or maybe even, have you received any criticisms from your constituents? Would you like to share those?
Well...
30 seconds, 30 seconds, please.
No, I mean honestly, you know, the, the thing for me in my businesses has always been around mentorship, growing the people that are working for me. And that's hard in this environment because you're a little more disconnected from the people that are working in the field. The criticisms that I've gotten are divorced from reality, so I don't pay much attention to them, honestly. So, just for what that's worth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I live in Cobb County, let me say that again, so I don't know what the applause was about, but it doesn't matter, okay? I will, I will keep it moving, okay? Thank you for sharing that. Let's move on to your goals. If elected for your sec, for your, for this following term, what are three achievable goals that you would champion in the next two years?
Achievable is, is the tough part. You know, the, the specificity of getting something else in here. We have a little economic development engine in Serenby. It has gone to, from zero to creating 40% of our property tax base in 10 years. That's a great thing, but it's only one and that's not enough. We need more of that sort of thing. That's what I spend most of my time working on right now, trying to make that sensitive development that is, you know, tuned to what we want happen. And I think in the next term, we could probably get something like that. There are other things, we've been working a lot on funding mechanisms that come externally, things like T-Splus that I fought for, that help us with some of our most pressing financial needs, paving the roads and all of that. And, and I think that there are other things like that out there that we can get hold of that will help us as well. And then the other thing is, we have so many other assets. And we've done such an amazing job in our parks and we have so many other opportunities there. And I am quite certain that we'll be able to activate some of that in the next four years as well and create a lot more opportunities for the people of the city to enjoy the nature that we're working so hard to protect.
Thank you, thank you. Let's talk about collaboration. As mayor, describe how you would build partnerships and strengthen collaboration with our city and the region.
You know, Richie pointed this out, what's around us is the thing that is most dangerous to us right now. We have a huge amount of development pressure pushing on us and it's not all good stuff. In fact, mostly it's, it's negative stuff. And the more of that negative stuff that happens, the harder it will be for us to achieve our vision. It's what I spend most of my time on right now. I have been, since before I was mayor, working with the mayors around us, with the ARC, with every agency that touches us to navigate or try to push for a higher order of development quality all around us. What's interesting is that Chattahoochee Hills' vision is one that has become kind of a touchstone for the areas around us. Everybody recognizes that if this happens, it's amazing. And if we can do some of it, it would be amazing for us too. And so trying to get the people around us to elevate their vision to more closely match ours so that we don't have warehouses all around us, so that we don't have garbage dumps all around us, so that it's better than what we've got, is the single biggest thing that we can do to make our vision happen externally.
Thank you. Local government. Mayor Reed, how would you rate the present form of government in Chad Hills on a scale of 1 to 10? 1 being poor, 10 being outstanding? And why would you rate that, whatever number you give it?
Well, when you talk about form of government, I immediately think of the charter. And, you know, it's, it's interesting. So as someone who is an entrepreneur, you might think that I would argue for maybe a strong mayor form of government where the mayor has a vote. But I recognize that that isn't necessarily the best solution. I think what works, what, what we've got actually works well for us here. I would probably give it an eight. And the one, the one reason that I don't give it a higher score... higher score is because I do think that the district mentality sometimes gets in the way of collaboration across the whole community. The reality is, our community lives and dies together, we don't live and die in our districts, and I think that it might be wiser if we had a couple of at-large districts, actually, in the community, so that we had more of a focus on, you know, making sure that everybody in the community is on the same page, and more of an opportunity for people to have those conversations.
Thank you. Citizen ring. How will you attract and keep the younger generation in Chatt Hills?
That is, you know, when you talk about jobs, and what we need for jobs here, I mean, we don't have a lot of demand for jobs frankly in the community, because everybody that's of job age has moved out, so they can educate their children somewhere where there are better schools. I'm exaggerating, not everybody, but that is a huge trend in this community. So, education is a primary thing, and, you know, working to make that happen. Sorry, what was the question again? Because I'm like off on education now.
Yeah, so, the question is, how will you bring in a younger audience, a younger, well, I mean, let's look at the audience here, I've got, I think, looking at, not, not saying that, not to offend anyone...
So yeah, I mean, anybody under the age of 30, right, three hands go up.
How do you bring in more millennials at that age?
It does come back to education. The way that we make education better is by bringing in those sympathetic corporate people to do development here, that bring in younger people that demand better education. Education rises and falls based on the input of the community that's around it, and if you bring in the kind of sympathetic employers that believe in our vision, want to support our vision, those people that come in along with that will lobby for better schools, and we will get better schools, and that's how you get young people here.
Okay, so I want to also ask a follow-up to that, I'm going to ask, because I asked the question to Richie about understanding that education in schools that's outside the scope of your role, how can you influence an outcome of bringing more quality schools to Chatt Hills?
I mean, it's outside the scope of our role, because we can't start a school, but it's certainly not outside the scope of our responsibility. I worked my butt off to make sure that we got a charter school here, because we needed a school, a good quality school in this community, and I'm no educator, so I didn't focus on the educational part, but I helped make the buildings happen and made that campus happen so that we had a good school here, and we've got a good school here now because of that. In that process, I've met everybody on the Fulton County School Board, lobbied them, you lobby them, you work, all of those connectivity pieces that you have, and you push for better. We deserve better down here, and you just have to push, and I agree, it's not something that's within our purview, but it's certainly something that we can work on.
Okay, and one last follow-up on this, and just to be fair, we asked about the younger generation, how will you support the older generation so that they can age in place?
So, two things, right? One is, on things like our public safety, we've added an extra paramedic to every shift. We have now full lifesaving capability on every fire shift. The medical transport vehicle that we're adding, so that in life-threatening cases, we can get people to the hospital quickly when AMR doesn't show up, which is most of the time, that's a huge thing. We also, and I've been lobbying for this for a while, and will continue to work with the council to make this happen, every city in Fulton County has some money that Fulton County will spend in that city on senior services. We've got extra space in this building, I want to put that money to use in this building, and I think we should, and I'm going to continue to push for that. We do have an aging community, and bless you all for coming here tonight, thank you, and me too, right? And making it safe for us, but then also sustainable by working on education and things like that, I think that's where it works for everybody, so that's the goal, my goal.
Thank you, thank you. Let's transition to community development. What development do you envision along South Fulton Parkway, and how do you think it will affect business already in existence?
You know, our zoning plan is very clear about what we expect for the Parkway. You have several huge tracts of land on the Parkway that should be the home for walkable mixed-use development that is supportive of our vision. It's the thing that you won't see most of the places that you are in the community, being on the Parkway, most of the traffic that it generates won't get out into the rest of the community. It's the most sensitive way to have development happen here. As to what's in that development, I'm happy, like the other folks were saying, to have anybody, anything that is sensitive to what we're doing here, that is inspired by what we're doing here, and wants to be here with us in this vision where most of the land gets protected. The benefit to the other businesses, we've already seen, I've got a friend who's an electrician in town, and he's over at Seronby all the time, he's making more money than he's ever made in his life, he doesn't live in Seronby, but, you know, the development that comes for those local businesses here in the community drives their businesses, it's a good thing, it's a win all the way around, and I would expect more of that.
Thank you, and we'll transition to public services, and this is a question regarding fire and rescue specifically. What are the most important challenges for our fire and rescue department to fulfill its obligations, and how will you address those?
The biggest difficulty with that department, like all of our departments, is money. We are fully staffed right now, we have a much improved fire rating, all the things that we can do within the scope of our budget, we've done, but we only have one fire station, and it's in the middle of the city, and there are places in the city that are five or six miles away from that fire station. We would be better served if we had another one somewhere. That's something we can't afford right now, but at some point, we need to be able to do that. There are people that are paying much higher insurance, because we don't have that right now. Again, there's almost nothing that I can think of, we have an amazing department, staffed by amazing people with amazing leadership. We are safer here than we have ever been in that regard, but it would be better if we had enough money to put another one in, and, you know, there's always equipment that we could use that could make it better.
Thank you. Final question, and this is around economic development, specific to infrastructure. How do you attract businesses to Chatt Hills when there is no internet service?
Well, about that, you know, it's interesting, actually, there's a chicken and egg there, right? The internet service providers will tell you, well, we're not adding any, because there's nobody living here, and, you know, hard to say that to the person who's living here that doesn't have internet. You know, we've worked with a local Wi-Fi line-of-sight internet provider that has actually been able to get internet to a lot of people that haven't been able to get it. We're talking to Fulton County about adding a tower that will expand our capacity for the emergency transmissions. That tower also, coincidentally, could house more of the Wi-Fi line-of-sight towers for, or antennas for the local internet service, and would cover another probably 30% of the city. So we're doing what we can within our own control, for sure, but again, the biggest answer to that is some more of the kind of economic development that will lead to those services coming in. The people that are on the way to Seronby have cable now, because they're on the way to Seronby, and Seronby brought cable in. The people that will be on the way to the thing that comes on the Parkway, whenever that comes, will also get that. It's a question of, you know, developing the environment in which those services are profitable for the providers, and we're working on doing that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Reed, and now, at this time, yes, you may applaud. At this time, I'm going to ask the other candidates to please take your places on stage again. We are now going to transition into the audience Q and A. Again, this is your last opportunity to write down your question. I see someone who has a question, if somebody could get that? Sure. You have like 10 seconds for a stretch break, too, just 10 seconds. Because I do need to collect the cards with the questions.
Have you guys looked at your...
And I am aware that this forum was advertised from 3:00 to 5:00 P.M., we start at the forum at 3:30. This is what we have left, we have the Q and A, it's very important that we get to your questions, so if you're okay, I'd like for you all to just stay, so that we can get through the Q and A, and then the candidates will have their closing statements as well. So I just want to keep you apprised of where we are on the agenda for this forum. Remember that this is being recorded, so it's very important that while I'm asking questions, that you all are seated, and that the room is silent. And with that, I'm just going to give a few more seconds for citizens to get water and take their seats. Now, I'm going to do my best to read your handwriting here. I also want to just be transparent, that if there are some questions on the card that I've already asked to the candidates, that I won't repeat those questions, I want to be transparent about that. And Lori is keeping time, so I'm going to look to you, Lori, to tell me when we need to end the Q and A, and in that regard, if there are questions that did not get asked, just know that your questions will be given to each of the candidates for them to follow up after this forum.
How long are you going to be in the Q and A part of the...
Q and A will be, I allocate it 27 minutes for this, and it's 10 to 5, so we may have to wrap this up in 15 minutes, to respect your time, and to allow for the...
Do it, stay with it.
Stay with it? Okay, I want to be respectful of the time.
You want to do the wrap-up questions first, and then just...
No, no, I don't, I want to do the Q and A first, and then the candidates will close with their final remarks. This question is going to be directed to our mayoral incumbent, Mayor Reed. There have been questions regarding the notion that city business is conducted in secret. How do you address this?
You know, in secret would imply that there's some goal to hide things from people, and that, I can tell you, has never happened here. You know, there are a lot of meetings that I go to, there are a lot of conversations that one has in the process of doing this, there are conversations that you have with Richie on the phone, I mean, he talked about that, too. It's like anything, you know, you elect in a representative government the best people you think you can find for the job, and those people do the best they can to serve the needs and interests of the citizens that they're elected to do, and as transparently as possible. We have town hall sessions at the end of every meeting, we have a lot of conversation and work sessions, where we talk about the whys and hows of things happening, and, you know, again, anybody ever wants to ask me any question about anything ever, my phone number, my cellphone, my email address is all readily available, we don't do it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next question, I'm going to actually direct this question to Richie, it wasn't marked for the candidate, so I'm going to ask this question of you, as you are an incumbent candidate. Do we have a development authority? If not, why? And would you work toward this?
We have a planning guy, a development authority...
I'm sorry, my...
Yeah, we have, you know, Mike Morton, he works in planning, he sees every sheet of paper that comes across that desk. Working toward the development authority, I think that the truthful answer is, until some development comes, there's really not a use for it, it goes back to kind of like the internet situation. You know, the lines aren't in the grounds, because, you know, AT&amp;T doesn't find it worth dropping $5 million in the ground to serve 2,800 people, it's kind of the truth of the matter, simple math. Same thing with the school, we can lobby for it, but if you ain't got no students, they're not going to send down, you know, $20 million to put a structure on the ground. So it's important, moving forward, what some of the other candidates have touched on, you know, people know where Chatt Hills is, people know we're here, they know that we have a standard. We just got to pray and hope and do a little marketing, and find those right fits, and until we find those right fits, that's just kind of a department that, in my opinion, just will not exist, you know?
Okay, I'm going to ask, actually, I'm going to ask the District Four candidates to also respond to that, so just what are you, what's your opinion about the development authority? Do you see a need for it, and why? And Alan, let's start with you.
Okay, I don't, I don't think we're big enough yet to...
Speaking to, I'm sorry, please turn into, turn your mics on, so that we can record your responses.
It's the switch. It's all knowing where the switch is. I don't think, I don't think we're far enough along in terms of even beginning economic development to justify having a development authority, and we are working with development agencies, including Fulton County and the state of Georgia, and making them aware of the kind of community we are, what our aspirations are, and have certainly done a great job, and Tom has done a lot of this, of getting us on the map with other development agencies in the, in the area.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca?
I believe we need a development authority, because if we're just sitting back and waiting for people to come here, that they don't know about Chatt Hills, they don't understand what's here, that's to our detriment, and we're going to be sitting here waiting for somebody to just show up at our doorstep. We have the film industry over in Fayetteville, that are always looking for places to shoot movies, things like that. We can proactively be going after that, for them to be coming here, spending their money, having the city license them to be here, and getting Chatt Hills on the map for at least some kind of industry, which is the film industry. These are things that we need to take control of our own destiny. This isn't something that I think we can sit back and just wait, because if we just sit back and wait, things are going to keep developing around us, and we're going to be caught empty-handed at some point, where things, where people say, what's Chatt Hills? Where is Chatt Hills? And why should I invest in Chatt Hills? Let's take control of that.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and this is going to Mayor Reed. This question is something that Alan already touched on, and this is about bringing the Seronby inside, the community inside and outside of Seronby together. Do you have any ideas about how to bond the rural community with Seronby to work as a whole for the benefit of the city?
It's exactly the answer that Alan had as well, it is about bringing people together in a thoughtful way. There are so many volunteering opportunities, both inside and outside of the community, that allow people from all parts of the community to come together. We've had a lot of examples of that, and we proactively try to create those. A lot of, there have been a lot of things over the course of my, my term, that were, you know, how can we get some more people to help to cross community lines? And I'll be clear, too, it's not just Seronby and, and outside of Seronby, there's a lot more diversity in this community, I think, sometimes than people give it credit for. We also have a community called the Crossroads Community, which has as many people living in it as Seronby does, and it is just as disengaged sometimes from the rest of the community as Seronby might feel. It's important to try to bring everybody together, and, you know, in, in a small city with our small budget, we've done a lot to try to do that. You know, when we had our comp plan update, we sent a mailing out to everybody, because there's no newspaper here. We do a lot of things to try to get people to know about the meetings that are happening, and come, and meet their neighbors from everywhere in the community.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Rebecca, question for you. How do you ensure citizens in Chatt Hills stay informed? What corridor has been or will be designated for future development?
Could you repeat that, please?
Is that two questions?
I missed two.
All right, so let's answer the first question.
That was me.
Yeah. How do you ensure citizens in Chatt Hills stay informed?
Communication. One of the central platforms of my candidacy is communicating with every member of both my district and the city, because again, we're so small that any city council member is more or less an at-large, and this is going to be going to every citizen, at every citizen that I can, and say, how can I keep you informed as a city council member? Can I call you? Can I come to your door once a month? Can I send you email? Can I use social media? What way can I communicate what's going on in the city to you, so that you understand what's happening, and you know that you have a voice in your city? And that when I come see you, I'm going to sit and listen to you. What is it that you're looking for? When I'm sending you an email, please write back to me, let's get together, let's sit down and talk about this. These are the things that are imperative... These are the things that are imperative, because again, we're such a small community and we all know each other. Let's work on continuing to get to know each other and building our community together.
Okay. And you touched on earlier about economic development, hence the second question.
Okay.
What corridor has been or will be designated for future development?
Well, right now, according to the comp plan, the South Fulton Parkway is a corridor where a lot of the development is going to be occurring. And it's basically, where is the best place to locate whatever businesses are coming to Chattahoochee? That's a conversation that everyone needs to have. Because I don't think we can sit here and just say, "This one specific location is where economic development is going to occur," because we don't know what kind of economic development it is at the current time. This is, again, a small city with good communication allowing every citizen to know, "Hey, this is what's happening. This is what's coming down the pike. Let's sit down. Let's have a conversation." There's a town hall meeting in Crossroads. There's a town hall meeting in Saranbee. Come to it. Hear what, hear what the city officials have to say about it. Hear the pros and cons of whatever is going to be done in the city, and let's have this discussion and figure out specifically where we can put these things and how it can benefit Chattahoochee.
All right. Alan, to you, I want to ask the same question and give you an opportunity to respond. How are you going to ensure citizens in Chattahoochee stay informed? And I'll ask the second question as well.
I think I do that by being available. And the way I like to express it is, I don't have an office. My office is your living room, your back porch, your driveway, or wherever we happen to see one another. And I've already had this experience on the planning commission, and people kind of look to me as a source of what's going on in the city. And I kind of stay informed mostly by coming to work sessions. And so I try to spread general knowledge on a one-on-one basis. And when people have problems, I try to help them with their problems.
Okay. All right. And then switching to development, any, do you have a different perspective on what corridor has been or will be designated for future development? Or anything specifically you want to say about the South Fulton Parkway?
Well, we chose the, we chose to define the corridor along the South Fulton Parkway as the primary place for development for two very good reasons. Number one, the Parkway provides ready access into and out of Chattahoochee Hills, both toward Douglas County and toward Fulton, the rest of Fulton and Atlanta. The other is, frankly, is an economic decision. That's a road that the state pays to maintain. So we can increase the traffic burden on the South Fulton Parkway without further burdening the city's road budget.
Okay, all right, thank you. Richie, what do you propose to accomplish in your term of office?
Well, what I propose to accomplish? I think one of the best assets is, what I like to do is think outside the box. How to create money without digging in your pocket. And those, you know, I'll give you an example, you know, the hunting lease, the parking fees, things of that nature, a few other things on the table. Just because we are tight, you know, we are. It's no big, it's no big secret. But, you know, one thing I really want to accomplish is, I guess the biggest thing, is to just put an eye on developers. I mean, I make no bones about it where I stand. You know, I want this place to be rural. We need some growth, but we need the right kind of growth and we need the right kind of people. And I just don't budge. I've already had to tell a few developers, "You can't move me. There's no reason in meeting with me if, if, if I know what you've got is not what we want." But we do entertain everything, and I just think that to maintain that rural character, that is everything. And that's kind of guard the ship, because that's how this city moves. We move year by year with our budget. We stack it in the back door. We see what's coming, and we progress so we can continue to move. And it's because we're a city that is not built out. That's just the truth of the matter. That's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Richie, I'm going to stay with you first. One more question here. What have been your major accomplishments as city council representative for District Two?
For District Two, I would say a major accomplishment was simply getting elected. And, and the reason I say that is because the situation that we were in, I come from a very deep-rooted family, I'm in a good family, and I have standards. And when I see a lot of you people out there that I know, I mean, what I say is what I mean for a roundabout way. I told everybody when I ran, "The money is in this town to run this town, and it's in this town to run this town. This town is running." Told you we'd get ahead of eight ball, and we did. And it's, it's been a lot of hard work, okay? But recognize, too, it's only been the last two years that we've had some options. So I'd say during the first four years, our biggest accomplishment was making sure that this meeting even took place. And that's exactly what we did. And moving forward, I don't know where that road leads us, but I know one thing, I know with what we've got now and where we're going to go, that road does lead north. Because I'm not the guy that goes backwards. Somebody's going to win. Why not us? Who told you you had to settle for second? And, you know, I was a big proponent in behind getting the drug dog conversations. I was a big proponent in the medical emergency transport vehicle, however you word that thing. You know, there's been a lot of back, I mean, conversations we've had about certain things, but, you know, and it's really everybody. That's not really on me. You know, we all, you know, but there are some things I push a little harder than most. But that's, that's the great thing about what we've got. We've got a darn good team.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, lots of questions here on economic development. I'm going to ask this question of Alan and Rebecca, but I'm going to start with Alan. Do you believe that the big concerts such as Tomorrow World and other large festivals are good for our city, or do you think they are bad?
Sarah takes that one.
Alan?
Yeah. I would say that, I guess I'm going to say that I don't think that they're particularly helpful for the community. They cause a lot of problems for the community. They put a considerable burden on the city staff, and, and they end up generating a lot of complaints from unhappy citizens. And I don't think that the revenue we gain from this fees is anywhere near worth balancing off unhappy citizens. So I'm not, I'm not big on that.
Okay, all right. Rebecca?
Unfortunately, this goes to my conclusion, so I'll just do part of my conclusion here. I think situations like Tomorrow World, we need to look at it as a city and say, "What economic benefit do we derive from this coming to our city? And what economic benefit do the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills get from having this here? Are we willing to put up with a three-day concert? It's going to be disruptive. Absolutely. Will there be some noise complaints? Absolutely." But if this brings in enough revenue to say, "Regrading three or four roads," is that worth it to the citizenry? That's a question that needs to be put out there, because as a city, we need to make these decisions together. This isn't something where it's just, I can arbitrarily say, "No, this is bad," or "Yes, this is good." Because we need to look at these on a case-by-case basis at this time, because we're still small enough to do that and deliberately do this. Because one good thing about something like a concert is that its, its long-term footprint is zero or close to zero. It comes in, it happens for a few days, there's some disruption, it leaves. But the money stays here. So it's a conversation that we need to have with everybody.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mayor Reed. This election appears to be so much about dirt roads.
Wow.
What could have been done differently to prevent our current state?
You know, the dirt road thing is one of those real issues, too. For the people that live on them, to have them in bad shape is a, is a painful thing. The difficulty is, again, that this is a financially-driven problem. We focused on survival, to Richie's point, for the first couple of years. Then we focused on building the staff that we needed to get that work done. And then the biggest problem that we had was that the, the motor grader that we had, which was about 35 years old, that we had picked up for next to nothing, wasn't physically capable of doing the full job. It could scrape, but it couldn't do the crowning and ditching and all of the things that you need to properly maintain the gravel roads. We were just able to buy a new one. We had the wherewithal to buy a new one, and we're now about two-thirds of the way through the process of rebuilding all of our gravel roads. When that's done, they will be in the best shape that they've probably ever been in. The people that have gotten that done are already calling to say how, how much they love them. And, you know, to the people that we haven't gotten to yet, I am truly sorry, but there's not much we could have done. Again, it's a financially-driven thing, and, and, you know, as quickly as we could, we got to them.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to stay with you, Alan, excuse me, Mayor Reed, for this question. How do you see people able to afford their taxes when property values increase with development?
That's an issue everywhere that, that anything good happens with respect to property values. It's funny, you know, people complain about their property values when their taxes are going up, but they never complain about them when they're selling their house. And, and it's, it's one of those issues that frankly is a, you know, a big part of what happens anyway. Now, one of the benefits that we've got here, just for example, this year Fulton County put out an assessment that made it look like everybody's taxes were going way up. They rolled that back. They're basically keeping with the same tax level that they had last year. But our improved financial situation, in part because of new development that's happened, in part because of other things that we've done, has allowed us to roll back our millage rate, right? So that's how you can manage that. You have quality growth that supports your vision. You're able to maintain your millage rate at a rate that doesn't punish your citizens. Things like the homestead exemptions that we have, the exemptions for seniors that we have, are ways that you can mitigate the impact on people that's negative. And hey, again, the benefit is that, you know, when you decide you want to buy the farm next to you because it's a little prettier than one that you've got, you get to benefit from the rise in property values in the community.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Three minutes, okay? All right. I'm tracking the questions that I've asked each of you, and by my record, I'm going to give this last question to Richie. Okay, Richie, this goes back to development. This is the question. You mentioned development on the Parkway. What is it that you envision? So when I read this question and based on what I've heard you say, first of all, answer the question. I'll have a follow-up later, but what is it that you envision along the Parkway?
I envision something like some nice medical doctors' buildings, maybe a...
Are you speaking into the mic?
I envision something like a medical office, maybe a nice extension of a college campus, something of that, something that, that has a, you know, pleasing to the eye to drive by. Not what you get eight more miles down there, a Walmart distribution center. No, and I think some people have confused me. I don't have a problem with developing, but moving forward, we have to make sure that it is the right development. You get one shot at this. This is all you got.
Okay, two, and so here's my follow-up to that, because you also mentioned keeping away certain businesses or to protect the development. So you see medical facilities. What do you not want to see along the Parkway?
I don't want to see something dumping, you know, 250 tractor-trailers out there every day. I don't want to see, you know, a garbage dump. I don't want to see your, your standard strip center. What I want to see is, is stuff with, that's got some class, some stout, you know, some good stuff there. Because if you're going to, you know, like, like people say with the internet and when you say with the schools and all this, you have to understand, you don't have the, the amount of people here to convince anybody to dump that type of money into your town. That's where we're at. So until we get some, you know, you got to put, you know, step one before step two. We have to get some good economical growth. We have to make sure it abides by our, by our rules and our laws to make sure we stay rural. And that's kind of the first step. You got to create the money before you can create other stuff. So, I mean, and, and marketing, Tom's done an excellent job on that. People, they truly know who Chattahoochee Hills is. We have a lot of people knocking at that door. Unfortunately, they won't, you know, we, we have to make sure it is the right people. That's what you have to do. Believe me, those conversations are, they are what they are. And if you ever set through some in your own business, you know exactly what I'm talking about. But yeah, we're going to eyeball that. We're going to make sure. We got one shot at this. That's all we got. For the last 10 years, we've done a good job.
All right, thank you. Thank you, and thanks to all of the candidates for their responses to the Q and A. There were about three other cards here that I did not get to due to time, but just know that your questions will be given to the candidates for them to respond. Obviously, they will be here after this forum is over, so you can also address those candidates with these questions directly. And I'll also give them to Lori as well, if you'd like to publish them. Okay. All right. Okay, all right. So we are now at the close of our forum. Each candidate will now make his or her three-minute closing statement. And this time, we will go in reverse alphabetical order, beginning with City Council District Two incumbent Richard Schmidt, Richie. But before we get started, I do want to just allow an opportunity for the audience to be settled, so we can hear you uninterruptedly. Okay. Richie, your closing statement. Thank you.
First of all, it's, it's been a pleasure serving, doing this for the last six years. It really has. This is a place I like, a place I love, and those of you that know me know that. I can tell you, as far as communicating, I, I make it really clear, the best way to, if you ever want to get in touch with me, is by phone. I do not set aside three hours a day to play on email. I just don't. So my phone number is readily available. If you want to talk to me, I'll be glad to answer your questions. As far as communicating with the citizens, I'm just thrilled that this many people are here, this many new faces. The truth is, if you want to know what's going on, you're going to have to get involved sometimes. You're going to have to show up down here sometimes. And, you know, we're here twice a month. We do a workshop and we do a council meeting. That way, you know, at times, you know, it was touched on, as far as, you know, hearsay in our town. You want to eliminate the hearsay, show up here. I can tell you, if you got a question, I don't mind answering it. It's not a problem. But I mean, moving forward, just so you know, your city is just, it's really in a good place. You know, when you make a decision, whoever you vote for, you need to look at that document that people took eight, 10, 12 years to put together, and that's truly your vision. I don't tell people who to vote for. I know regardless of who sits up here where my standards are. And I just suggest that you, you allow me, since I'm going to be there another four years, and I appreciate that, just make sure I got somebody I can work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have our mayoral incumbent to offer his three-minute closing statement, Mayor Tom Reed.
I'm volunteering to be that good person to work with. I want to, I want to thank everybody for their patience, number one. I recognize it's hot in here. One of the things that should go on the list maybe is better air conditioning for this room. Juliette, thank you very much for your moderating. Lori and your whole team for putting this together. It's a big deal, and it's important for people to be able to hear what's going on. And I wanted to talk a little bit about, a little more about why I'm running for reelection. And it's not because it's easy, this job. It's not. It's a lot of work for no pay. I get to be the target of a lot of misdirected abuse and sometimes some outright fabrication. That's no fun. And what's worse is I get to miss a lot of evenings and weekends with my family, and I appreciate so much the fact that they support me in this, because it is not easy. But that's okay, because this thing that we're doing here is important, and it's one of the most important things, and I take that very seriously. I'm running for mayor again because of what I saw in Roswell. My family's lived in Roswell since I was a boy. When I moved to Roswell, Roswell looked a lot like Palmetto, sleepy little town out in the countryside, surrounded by fields. That's all gone now. It's all paved over. Every tree is gone, not every tree. There's still some trees. But all the farms are gone, I promise you that. And most of the families that were living there, when my family moved there in the mid-'70s, are long gone. That can happen here, too, if we don't do what we're doing. Don't mistake the pressure that's going on around us. Palmetto International Airport right now is being turned into a 5 million... Palmetto International Airport right now is being turned into a five-million-square-foot warehouse. It's going to put 3,500 semis a day onto the roads. The 2 million square feet up at the Walmart distribution center, the couple 3 million square feet that are going in in Palmetto where 85 crosses the Tyrone Road. That stuff is going to have a huge impact on us. And the 2 million people that they expect to move into the Atlanta region between now and 2040 are going to have a huge impact on us. The pressure is here. It's all about how we respond to it. The reality is whether you've lived here for 15 years or two years, or your family's been here for seven generations, you're here because you choose to be. And I think for a lot of people, they choose to be here because of this vision that we've outlined, of trying to keep as much of the rural character here as we can. It's one thing though to say you want it to be rural. It's an entirely different thing to know how to make that happen. And that's why I'm running for mayor. Somebody needs to know how to make that happen. The work I've done, the connections I've made, I can and will make this happen. Fixing the budget has allowed us to stay alive long enough to continue the process. The work that I'm doing outside of the city, with anyone that can have an impact on our outcome, that's what will seal the deal. I will get this done. I need your help to make that happen. There's two things that I need. One is for you to vote for me, again, as the mayor of Chattahoochee Hills. And I'm asking for that vote. Please vote for me, help me get reelected to make this work get finished. The other thing is that we need to work together, all of us, all of us in the community. We can't let the divisiveness that is taking over this country, that is eating up Washington, become a part of our community here. We can't sit behind our screens on Facebook, taking potshots at each other, making up stories that we can pretend to be outraged about. We can't. We have to roll up our sleeves and work together to make this vision happen. I'm committed to that for the city of Chattahoochee Hills.
Thank you. Thank you. Rebecca Michaels, your closing statement.
Lori and Juliette, thank you for the opportunity to come here and let you, the voters, hear what we have to say. Right now Chat Hills is 10 years old and we're in a really good place. But this is not a time to rest on our laurels and just hope that development comes down the pike and hope that something good happens someday. I think this is a decision between active and passive development. And right now, I feel the city's been taking more of a passive approach rather than an active approach. Because if we are to take control of our future, we need to be doing something intentionally about it today, not yesterday, not last week, and not kick the can down the road and pray that something good happens in another year, in another five years, in another 10 years. Again, as I said, every single question brought to city council, if I get elected, will be this. Does the economic development move Chattahoochee Hills towards or away from its rural character? This is of paramount importance. We need the economic development. We need the money coming into the city so that anyone who's come to the work sessions, when you sit and talk, Greg pushing, again, his medical transport emergency response unit. When you have to sit and say, are we going to put, are we going to put a dollar value on the life of several of our citizens so that we can go and grade a road? No, this is not something that we need in this city. We need something where we can do both of them. We can take care of our citizens and we can keep our infrastructure solid and up to date, that we can function as a city. That's something that I just look at and the tension with putting that question before city council of having to make that decision is not fair. Because either side of the argument is going to say, you're against us. This is something that we need to be doing together. One of the things that I propose for our city and everything that the council does is to be able to give the citizenry the economic benefit of any development. Again, as I said previously with Tomorrow World, Tomorrow World comes in, we're going to have three days of disruption, there's going to be noise, there's going to be people, there's going to be this, there's going to be that. I'm not saying that Tomorrow World is what it is, but just for instance. However, those three days of disruption are going to give the city X amount of dollars and with that, we will grade a road that's going to be good for five years. We are going to take care of Greg's vehicle, that's not an ambulance, and that's going to be able to save the citizenry. That's going to save somebody's life. These are the questions that instead of asking the questions, which one should we pay for, it's a question of how do we get out of, how do we get into a financial situation that we don't have to ask these questions? That's why I'm running for city council, that's why I ask for your vote on November 7th.
Thank you. Finally, Alan Merrill.
Let me offer some very personal insight. Why do I want to serve on city council? Haven't I done enough? Faze retiring, why shouldn't I? I thought long and hard about those questions. And obviously, I made a thoughtful decision to commit myself to the role of running to be on city council. From the beginning of my public service, I've said, I'm working for generations not yet conceived. In business, I took the long view, here I take an even longer view. Chattahoochee Hills has a brilliant plan to stay rural and natural now, before the temptation to sell out the sprawl comes knocking on our doors. The city of Milton, one of the new cities in North Fulton County, asked me, how do you preserve land? They'd like to be more rural. But the reality is that almost all the land in Milton has already been developed. I'm sorry, but it's too late. You can't change your mind, you can't go back. Chattahoochee Hills, on the other hand, is way ahead of the curve. I want our shared vision to become a reality, not so much for you and me, but for our grandchildren's Becoming a member of city council, it's not a stepping stone for Alan Merrill. I don't have any aspirations to go on to other public office. To me, city council is the top. This is not an ego trip. I know who I am, I know what I've accomplished, I know I'm appreciated, and I've always been willing to give credit to somebody else. The decision to run for this office is based on my faith. In this situation, I think that these words sum it up. Offering gifts to God is life-giving for the giver. Offering gifts to God is life-giving for the giver. I'm offering to serve God by serving you and your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren. And it's called public service. I want your vote to enable me to continue to be your community builder.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we give a round of applause to your candidates? Excellent, excellent. Thank you to each of the candidates for your participation in this forum. Thank you to the audience for just being a great audience, I appreciate that. This concludes my portion as the moderator. At this time, I will now turn the forum back over to our sponsor, Ms. Lori Searle. Can we give one more round of applause and include the moderator this time and candidates? Thank you very much.